Sir, I want to thank each one of y'all for coming tonight. And it is now 5:30 and time to begin our meeting. I would like for you to check your cell phones and please put them on silent. And if they do happen to ring, just go out in the corridor and do your business and then come back in. Your seat will be waiting on you. I'd like to now call on Commissioner Conner, who will give us the invocation to lead us into pledge of allegiance.
Goodbye, Lord. Thank you for the days you've given us, Lord. Thank you for a place to come to and address the citizens of this great county, Lord. We know this county's been flourishing because of your hands has been in it, Lord. We know that everything that you touch will turn to gold. Goodbye, Lord, I ask you to lead us and guide us as we go into this meeting, Lord, blessed the men and women overseas, blessed the first responders here that work every day to keep us safe. I ask you to hold the families up high, the sick and the suffering, Lord, I may not feel your amazing grace. Goodbye, put your hedge protection around everyone here, bring them back together again, in God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge leaders.
Stand up. W N A State of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, and eternal.
We will have the roll call now by Ms. Smithy White.
I, Venus Smithy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for theirs, for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman Roy Thompson, Chairman Kurt, Vice Chairman Kurt Deal, Commissioner Ray Mosley, Commissioner Anthony Simmons, Commissioner Jappy Stringer, Commissioner Timmy Rushing, Commissioner Toby Connor. I determine that we have six members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now yield the floor back to the chairman.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have a presentation and we're going to read a proclamation as National Public Works Week. Now, I'm going to ask Commissioner Kurt Deal if he will do the honors, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I read this proclamation in this department, our family has someone that's very dear to our family that has served Bullock County for, this July will be 20 years. That's Gilbert Groover. That's our, my father-in-law. He's been here a whole lot longer than I have. I will read this proclamation. Advancing quality of life for all. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, important to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people of Bullock County. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Bullock County to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the Bullock County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. And it's signed by all the commissioners.
Thank you.
Let me present this to...
Thank you. We're going to now ask for a picture to be made. And if Kirk, if you would come down here and all of the public works employees that are here, if y'all would gather around. Cindy, would you like to allow for us to group up here? Come down there?
We can stand up here.
We'll stand before you go. It should be good.
They want the ones that work now.
Why they got you up?
I ain't got my coat on.
We certainly do thank y'all for the work that you do, keeping everything that you are over in tip-top shape. Thank you very much. Next is our approval of zoning agenda, and we have one item, and I need a motion to approve the zoning agenda.
Simple, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion second, discussion. None, all those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous approval. If you would...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our sole agenda item tonight is a conditional use request by Andrea and Brian Henley, who have submitted an application for the conditional use to allow for a home occupation cottage industry. More specifically, that would be for a machine shop. The property is located at 789 Henry Futz Road. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use with conditions, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by six to zero vote. And I'll go through some of the general items for the case. This is the approximate location as shown in entirety of Bullock County. It's very south portion of Bullock County. Zoning is for, or the current zoning for the property is Ag 5. And the conditional use would use a building that was already on the property. As you'll see, surrounding properties are also zone Ag 5. This machine shop is not unlike others that you would see in the agricultural area. I believe the applicant is already doing this trade as a hobby and is just seeking to do, maybe do a little more in a commercial way. But this is the property generally where you would enter into the property for, to get to the shop. This will be the entrance, so there's a few single-family homes nearby. But the general location of the property, as well as the shop located on the property, staff was comfortable in the general standards that are contained in the supplemental standards of the zoning ordinance for this use. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Brian Henley if you could approach the podium for any questions that the commissioners may have.
Would you like to add anything?
That pretty sums it up. I said the shop's been there since 2008 as a hobby and just something I figured out would, you know, make available to the surrounding public and take it to a business setting of some sort, you know, very small, very low volume, you know, so, you know, not any vehicles in and out, no more than normal would be. So, that's about it. That pretty much sums it up.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, have any comments? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
I'm sorry. These are, we do have two people that signed up. They need to speak. So, if you would just have a seat, we'll have them to speak, and then you can have time for rebuttal if you would like. We'll keep up with the time.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Bill Emlee.
We're all.
Mrs. Kathy Smith.
I'd like to say good evening. Good evening. For the commissioners, my property is adjacent to the one that's in question. The brick house on the corner is my property. I was unable to attend the first reading due to not being in town, but I just was here to make certain that I have clarification on the intentions, the hours that it would be actually, the work hours that would be performed. Just want to make sure I'm clear on that information.
So, I could answer that. The ordinance requires that the hours of operation be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
And is that Monday through Friday, or?
Oh, well, that would be seven days a week. So, I mean, there's no day-of-the-week stipulation on that. But that may be consideration for commissioners if that was, you know, y'all's desire.
Because I know my spouse, he works mid-mornings, so I just want to make certain that it doesn't go beyond a specific time because he's in bed really early, because he has to get up in the mid-mornings. So, just want to make certain that that is, you know, adhered to.
Is noise your only concern?
Excuse me, yes. Just that, and making sure the noise, you know, is at the level that it should be, you know, in that time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So, eight to six is fine with you, is forced to ten?
That should be fine, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Time of operation, eight to six?
I'm sorry, sir.
If you... Commissioners, have any questions, comments?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
James, it says staff recommend approval with conditions, but I don't, are there any conditions on here? I don't see, at least on mine.
Yeah, I read that. I noticed that as well, but there's not any conditions on there. I think...
Okay.
There's, we put down there a zoning reminder just to specify the section 1425 about which cottage, which standards apply to the use, so there's no question. But I think that probably got mistakenly picked up as a condition, but staff would just recommend approval of the cottage industry use.
Okay. Everybody clear? And I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this conditional use.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Moving along, before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any other discussion of modifications desired by the county manager or the board?
Will the chairman yield?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We do, out of public necessity and for the good of citizens, have one modification to the agenda that we'd like to add under new business. The recreation department, for purposes of splash in the borough, need to have some concessions contracts approved expeditiously so they can maintain their opening date of May 18th. And it's my understanding that Mr. Akins will go over the agreements briefly. But again, we'd like to, you know, add the item to new business for discussion and action. And with that, I yield the floor back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. We've added the red department concessions discussion, item number two, under new business. And I need now to have a motion and for the approval of the general agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion with the addition of number two, under new business, for the recreation concessions agreement.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Moving now to the consent agenda. I must read these, and there is five items. Approve the minutes from Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Approve the minutes from Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. Approve a bid from Pine Road Show, East Coast, for the annual Firecracker Fest fireworks display in the amount of $20,000. Approve the awarding of a contract to Perkins Concrete Finishing LLC for the materials and labor to lay out the form and pour monolithic slab for the Bullock County Sheriff's Office Drug Task Force Evidence Building in the amount of $34,020. Item number five is approve the yearly 911 telephone service and support contract with Ryan Public Safety Solutions in the amount of $22,760. And that is the items on the consent agenda. We can vote on these collectively, or if you'd like to move anything under new business, we, now's the time to speak up.
I'll make some moves. We vote on collectively, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. All of those in, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. The consent agenda is approved. Under new business, we have two items, and county engineer Brad Deal will discuss the first item.
Brad Deal, county engineer. Let's see, I guess we got this working now. So, as you all are aware, Georgia Department of Transportation is currently in the process of constructing a roundabout at the Harville Road-Lanston Chapel intersection. I have a part of the plan shown on the screen, and if you're looking at the screen, Harville Road is the road going north and south on the screen, and then Lanston Chapel is going towards the bottom-left corner. And then going towards, excuse me, going towards the upper-left corner is Bethel Church Road, and that's the subject of this item. Bethel Church Road is a county-maintained dirt road, and GDOT is going to have to realign the road so that it will come into the roundabout. And so, they're paving the first 375 feet or so of the road, and that would be the part that has the dark solid lines on the screen. And then the remainder of the road, which has the dashed lines going towards the upper-left corner, would remain as a dirt road as part of their project. And this is just an overhead view, so the part that's colored green is the part that GDOT is planning to pave as part of their project. The yellow part would remain as a county-maintained dirt section. And the part that's being paved is about 375 feet by GDOT, which leaves about 875 feet that would have remained as dirt. So, staff felt that it would make sense during the construction of the roundabout to look at the option of trying to pave the remainder of the road so that it wouldn't have to be maintained. There's a good bit of drainage and runoff that comes from Harville Road and Lanston Chapel and runs down this road towards the end. The entire road kind of slopes downhill from the end. And you may be able to tell, it's a little hard to tell on the screen, but at the end of the yellow portion, there is a mobile home park, and on the left-hand side is where Bethel Church is located. And I think from what I understand, the church has been there since maybe the eight, late 1800s or early 1900s. So, it's a historic church. There's about 15 homes in all on the road in addition to the church. And there's a couple homes on the left-hand side before you get to the church, if you can tell on the screen. And this is just a picture looking back up the hill towards Lanston Chapel and Harville. So, a lot of water comes down this hill, as you can see on the left-hand side. We have fairly frequent washouts if there's a heavy rain, just because of the topography of that area. And in fact, one of the residents says she's lived there for, I think she said, over 50 years. She says that she does all of her grocery shopping based on the weather forecast because of the steepness of the hill. She can't get out to the paved road sometimes for a couple days, just depending on what the weather's doing. And this is just another picture looking down towards the end of the road from, with your back turned, to Lanston Chapel and Harville, and it just kind of shows some of the drainage that goes down the side of the road. So, this is County Road number 507, and the entire length of the road is about 1,250 And it is a dead-end road as well, so all the residents really just have one way in and out. And again, we just felt like it made sense to look at trying to pave the remainder since the first 375 feet was going to be paved by GDOT. We do not, we will not have to acquire any additional right-of-way. We, staff has worked on a design where we kind of utilize the existing prescriptive easement that the county has, so we're going to make it work within that. We have asked, requested some help from public works, though, to do some vegetation removal, some grading, before the contractor would move in to do the work. We obtained two quotes from two contractors that were working on the roundabout project, and the idea was that they could do this work simultaneously with the roundabout, because they're going to have a detour in place at a certain point. There's going to be some interruption to traffic, and it just seemed like a logical time to try to do that. The low quote came from J.A. Long, which is the prime contractor on the roundabout project, and they gave us a quote of $166,000. We actually had some ad alternates on there that we wanted to do, and so if you add in those, it would give you a contract amount shown as $199,371.53. And that, a lot of that is for stabilization of that ditch, because there is a lot of erosion that comes down that road just because of the slope. And so, those extra things we put in there was to try to stabilize the ditches and protect the road once it gets paved. And we think the price is good because Antioch Church Road is a similar length to that, and we completed it at a cost of about $185,000. Bethel Church is similar, it's a little bit longer actually than Antioch Church, so we think the price is a good one. So, we have spoken with all of the property owners on the road and also some of the residents. So far, everyone has been overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly in favor of the project. We haven't gotten any opposition to this point. The church is also very much in favor of doing this. And as a side note, this road was listed in the long-range transportation plan that was done, I think it was in 2007, as a road to be paved as part of that transportation plan. And of course, this would reduce maintenance, and obviously, public works has to do a fair amount of maintenance on this road just because of the topography there. And I think, as I mentioned earlier, the idea was to do this, if approved, we would do it during the construction of the roundabout, so the contractor, as he's paving the roundabout and paving the portion of the road that they're already obligated to do, they would just continue down the road and to the end of the, the end of the county-maintained part of it. It does go into the mobile home park. We were not going to do anything there because the county doesn't maintain into the mobile home park. And have spoken with staff, and we do have some TSPLOS funds that we feel could be allocated towards this if approved. And just let me know if you have any questions. Thanks.
If there's none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve this request.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the concession contract discussion from the red department. Who's going to present?
I will, Mr. Chairman, initially. These are two concession agreements, sort of our standard concession agreements. One is with Blue Mile Pizza LLC doing business as Tarantino's Grill for what we call the Grill concession stand, and they are paying the county $60,000 for the season in three installments of $20,000 each to be able to operate this concession stand. The second one is for the, I think, a new concession stand, the Wave Pool concession stand, and this is a contract with Statesboro Chick LLC doing businesses Chicken Salad Chick. I think you're all familiar with them. And this one is for $30,000, so they'll be paying three payments of $10,000 each to be able to operate this concession stand. And that's basically it. We just need you to approve these two agreements. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Then I ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept these concession agreements.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Moving on now to public comments. At this time, I'll recognize those citizens who signed up to speak and once your name is called, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and make your comments. And each speaker will have five minutes, and we will put the clock on.
Mr. Bill Emlee.
Good evening, commissioners, commissioner chairman, commissioners, general manager, development authority. My name is Bill Emlee. I'm a resident and registered voter of Bullock County. I'm an elected representative of the Bullock County Seniors Property I'm an elected representative of the Bullock County Seniors Property Owners, which is numbers greater than 1,470 people. I noticed in our briefing of the new proposed budget that we're wanting to provide a increase of 3% to the county employees. And this, again, is on top of the 8% that you voted and approved last year. I hope the Commissioners are also keeping in mind that last year, the senior citizens of Bullock County, in their social security, received an 8%, pay raise, of which 14.9% was, the health insurance was taken out. So they didn't receive any pay raise. So the question that a lot of senior citizens are always asking is that the senior citizens are paying for the increase of salaries to the county employees, which they are deserving of, but the senior citizens are also increasing, or not senior citizens, you all are also passing the budget to increase the taxes of the senior citizens to pay for the pay raises of the county employees. Is that fair? Is that just? And is that right? You open the meeting, every meeting, by a prayer, and in the same Good Book, it says that no one person can serve two masters. And sometimes it's always asked, which masters are you serving? Because it was clear when you passed the 2024 budget unanimously after over 300 people came before you in opposition to the budget, and you unanimously, the very next day, passed the budget. So which masters are you serving? Because it was clear that you were not serving the people of Bullock County. Right and just full accountability when we're looking at these projects, when I'm seeing that the fire department needs more personnel, the sheriff needs more personnel, we need fire trucks like this. But at the same time, when we're passing property tax abatements with no impact fees, so the question lies is, are these people, these new employees that we need to have, firemen, EMS, and like this, are these just the growth of the, of our county? Oops. Or is this also the impact of these industries coming into the county? Thereby, we have to meet their needs, but they're not paying for those needs. So again, you're passing the buck on to the property owners. When we're looking at approvals, when we're looking at the Floridian Water, we had a meeting of the EPD, gave us a lot of information, and a lot of questions were raised. But yet, people of Bullock County are also still waiting for the Commissioners to help us understand what is all about this Floridian Water? What about the property tax abatements that we're giving out? And how is it impacting us? When we're talking about in the, when we're looking in the paper and we see that the CFO has stated that we have more resources requests than we do funding, and in the same time, you're talking about cutting the military rate or rolling back the military rate. So are our department, like EMS and fire and chief and like this, requesting for people and resources greater than what our funding is supporting? And then, at the same time, you're cutting back on the military? One plus one is not equaling two. When I'm looking at the sheriff's department and the fire department and the EMS and all the amount of people that they're requesting, again, I'm asking, are these requests based on the projects that you have approved? Well, when you approve projects, and do you place impact fees on these projects if they are impacting essential services? And if you are not, then who is paying for these services? Is it all of the people? Is it the property owners? Are you passing the expense on to the property owners? I strongly and recommend, oh, sorry. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Neville. I live at 82 Shaq Road, Register, Georgia. I haven't spoke to y'all in a while, but I have some things on my heart, and I'm going to speak from my heart. Somebody asked me a couple of weeks ago, sometime when I was giving a speech, if I wanted them to help me write a speech, and I said, I don't write speeches. I speak from the heart. So even I don't know what I'm about to say, completely. My biggest concern right now, I mean, there are a lot of concerns in this county. I understand this. I'm not happy about the taxes last year. You know, we could go on, a lot of things. I'm obviously running for election, because I feel like making, that I can make a difference and can make a change. My biggest problem right now is that the division in this county. And I believe a lot of that's your fault. I'm just going to be honest with you. It is your fault. And the reason why is because when we come up here to speak, I'm considered an outsider, a person who's against the commission. I'm not against the commission. I'm telling you my feelings. But when I walk out this door, there's going to be all these people in this room that are going to say, Alicia Neville came up there and told the Commissioners that they did this and that and the other. That's wrong. A lot of us believe that what you did last year was wrong. I don't like these flyers coming to my house, and you know, I was thinking the same thing that the gentleman before me said. We open every meeting with a prayer, and I don't take God lightly. I sincerely pray to him for everything, even when my puppy gets lost, or a bird is sick, whatever. Because I know that God will take care, as long as I'm doing my best. But when, we've got an election here, and it has changed people. And I'm getting these flyers sent to my house saying, oh, I've lived here for so long, I run a successful business. Well, I've lived here for 60 years. That doesn't necessarily mean I would make a good Commissioner. I probably would, but that doesn't mean because I've lived here 60 years I would. The only reason I think I would, if I wanted it, which I don't, is because I would be honest with people. Because you're all going to have to go up there one day, and you're going to have to go to those pearly gates, and you're going to have to face God, and you're going to have to explain to him why you lied to people, to their face, why you have put people down, why you have let this county divide like this. And come May 22nd, win or lose, we're going to all still be living in this county. I'm not moving if I lose. I'm going to still be here. I don't care which one of you wins, or which one of them wins. I'm not moving. I'm going to still be here, and I'm going to still speak, if I feel led to, because this is my county, too. It doesn't just belong to Commissioners. It doesn't just belong to the people who work for the county or the Board of Education members. It doesn't just belong to a few. It belongs to all of us. And we're going to have problems if we can't come together. I've been up here before, saying this very same thing. I'm just more upset now, because of the division that I've seen. I know that everyone's been invited, like everyone that is running for election will get invited to things, and then y'all refuse to go. Okay, that's your prerogative, but don't divide the county over it. Don't sit here and act like your group is better than this group, because you know what? I don't even consider a group. I am not running against anybody. I am running for a position. I have never said one thing to put my opponent down, and I won't. But I wonder how many of you can go to bed at night and say that? And if you can't, then I just ask you to check yourself. I'm not running for election to add another line on my obituary, and I hope that you're not running just so that you can have more lines on yours. I hope that you truly care about this county, and that you're truly trying to do the best. But please don't make promises that you can't keep, and please don't tell us you're going to reduce taxes when you just raised them last year. Just please be honest. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Tim Powell.
My name's Tim Powell. I live on Stucky Lane, which is the area I want to ask you a couple of questions about. It's up between Middle Ground and Cleto. So I've got three different questions, not related at all. First one, I don't exactly know how the responsibility is divided between the railroad company and the county on maintaining railroad crossings, but if y'all want some spare parts to most any make and model a car, you can go up there beside that railroad crossing at Cleto and pick them up. The thing, the last time I saw, I guess it's the railroad company's responsibility, because they were there two years ago, one morning, pouring the, I guess, cold asphalt that you can buy in a bag at Lowe's into the craters there around the rail line. It lasted about two days. Now, that road gets a lot of traffic with heavy fertilizer trucks, heavy carrot trucks, heavy grain trucks, cotton trucks, everything. And it just won't hold up to a bag of cold asphalt from Lowe's. So if there's any pressure that y'all can bring to bear on the railroad company, you know, I understand they're not running the most profitable business in the world, and they do serve a purpose, bringing in goods to the county and taking goods out. But it's up, you know, if they're responsible for the crossing, then they're responsible for keeping it up and making it safe for people to cross the cross. And that one there is a hazard. Okay, number two, sitting right there next to that railroad track is, of course, the Cleto Fire, Volunteer Firehouse. And I've noticed for the last three months, or last few months, I don't think it's been a year yet, a fire truck's sitting outside, two vehicles, one of them's a pretty big fire truck, sitting outside beside the firehouse. And I was just wondering, is that, is that like a backup truck? Is it, because there obviously must be a new one sitting in the house. Is it surplus that, you know, if it's surplus, there's got to be some little old town somewhere in the United States that could use the thing, and, you know, before it sits there and rots and rusts, it ought to go to the auction, so we can get a little more out of it, instead of just sitting there and, you know, dilapidate it, or continue to dilapidate if we don't use it anymore. And the third thing I wanted to ask you is, you know, we discussed some time ago about the water agreement between Bullock County and Bryan County, and I was just wondering if you, any of you could report what any progress might be on the negotiations for that agreement between Bullock County and Bryan County, as far as when we get what seems to be the wheels in motion to dig wells, establish a county water system, and where those negotiations stand, as far as what we will be able to make off of the water and so forth. That would be my three concerns tonight. Thank you very much.
Here, I'm going to ask you to address the train tracks. Tell it just like it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman Thompson and Commissioners. Technically, it is the railroad's responsibility. They have a right-of-way. They don't necessarily like encroachment into that right-of-way from anybody, and if we do make any encroachments in there, then we're liable for the encroachments. And so we try to stay away from any additional liabilities for the county's sake, for the citizens' sake. Brad may be able to give a little bit more information. He's made several contacts with those companies that are responsible for that track, and I think it's Dixie Southern, I believe, right now, is the contractor that maintains or responsible for the maintenance of those tracks. We've had several communications with them over the last couple of years in several locations, and we've had several complaints on the bypass just west of 301, there where that crossing's at. And yes, they are very slow about reacting to try to correct those issues, but, and we do know that they exist, but for a liability of the county's sake, we try to stay away from that.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
I just want to add one thing. Robert Seaman, Assistant Director of Public Works, I do want to add to what Director Butler was saying. At railroad tracks, we do have limits that we are allowed to not go in. But if you look at the crossings, every crossing has a specific number assigned to it. There's a blue placard on the posts that are there. If you will call that telephone number and give them the crossing number and issue your complaint or concern, then it's on them to address it. That is one of the ways that the bypass got more attention to it recently, I think it was October last year, myself and Brad were out on one in that area, and we talked directly to the railroad officials, and that was the instructions they gave us. If we have concerns, we figure out which crossing it is, we call that number, and they take in the complaint or the concern.
Brad, you have anything to add? You have anything to add?
No, is Robert, sorry. We did actually meet with the railroad at this particular crossing that was being discussed, and tried to coordinate some work. The railroad actually asked us to help them with doing some paving around it, and we never could get it lined up where we could get a contractor to help out with that in line with their schedule, because they've got to replace some, actually replace some tracks where it crosses there. And I don't know if you remember anything else, but we just haven't ever been able to coordinate it. The railroad, for some reason, likes to ask the unit, the local county or city, to help with providing some asphalt around it and that kind of thing, but we just haven't been able to get it lined up. But I will check back in with the railroad. We've got some contacts and just see what we can do to maybe revive it.
But the county does not have the responsibility of moving the railroad tracks, is that correct?
Oh, no, sir. We can't, we can't do that, and that's all in their jurisdiction.
Right. Well, and you know, I make that statement simply because I know we can't go there and move railroad tracks. And basically, they don't want us to touch in it anyway, because of liability. All right, let's call up the fire chief.
Ben Tapley, Fire Chief. How you doing, sir?
All right. Surplus, the truck outside of Cleto, that was the question. Why is it outside the Cleto Fire Department?
All right, that's a 1996 Spartan, was a good truck for us for a long time. We sent it to the shop about a year and a half ago. They sent it back, said they couldn't fix it, the pump, it wouldn't go into pump gear. And then we sent it to our technician, our EVT, at the county shop, and he sent me back a picture. He said, I'm taking this out of service, because the actual frame is rusted into. So it has been salvaged. We're going to have to get rid of it. Obviously, you can't go to anywhere else to be a fire truck, so we will be going to surplus or salvage as soon as we can. There's actually another van there, was donated from Garden City Fire to the Lee Field Volunteer Department, probably 10, 15 years, probably 15, 20 years ago. We're working on clearing the title for that. It came back, actually, being owned by a construction company in Garden City that's no longer in business. So we're working on salvaging, clearing that, so we can get it on the surplus market as well.
Okay. Thank you. Water agreement.
I'll take that.
All right.
Of course, you know, Mr. Chairman, you've been in consultation with Chairman Enfinger in Bryan County on occasion as well, too, but what's happening right now, I won't say the negotiation- But what's happening right now, I won't say the negotiations have been suspended. They're kind of in a state of suspense because Bryan County is actively trying to secure the land they need for their two wells. As you know, we will have two wells that are not under construction yet. But the land acquisition by Bullock has been completed. So I would probably foresee within the next couple of weeks, if not sooner, we may see a resumption of the negotiations. But I don't think we're that far apart. I think it's just been interrupted by Bryan County having to take on some tasks a little bit quicker with the water infrastructure. Because you may recall that Hyundai wanted to speed up their production process by, or accelerate it by at least one quarter. So I think, not to use a pun in lieu of the chief being up here, but Bryan County's just drinking out of a fire hose right now. But they, they need to get all of those things in place before we can really resume the negotiations because the quid pro quo is also with sewer. They're building a sewer plant. And we would like to purchase capacity from that plant ultimately. So temporarily suspended, if you will, until Bryan County can complete a couple of other tasks. But pursuant to an open records request that was made about the agreement some time ago, nothing has changed since that time, although there has been some anecdotal discussion verbally by phone and so forth. But I think the act of meeting of the parties will resume in a couple of weeks, again, after Bryan County resolves its land acquisition issues for their wells.
Anybody, any other commissioners have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I think to, I think at the tail end of his question, he asked what possible revenues. And I think, you know, even, even if we don't negotiate any higher at the rate that was in the original agreement, would at maximum capacity would generate $1,875,000 per year from the...
Possibly higher.
Possibly higher.
And then through the revenue sharing agreement, which won't commence until 2028. And the number's very little bit because we're being reimbursed on the front end for the infrastructure contribution that we made. And that, those dollar, revenue sharing dollars are in the form of pilot payments, which is an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes. So once that starts rolling in on a more regular basis after 2028, it'll average about $1,007,000, $1,008,000 a year. So I think the idea that's been discussed among the commissioners is to reinvest those dollars into the, into the county's proposed water system. And that way, that can keep the rates, the utility rates affordable for new development. And then subsequently, we can also use those dollars to invest in the sewer capacity as well. So there'll be an ongoing revenue stream for really a generation or beyond. So that's part of the capital stack that we're trying to build, along with some federal grants that we've acquired for wastewater infrastructure as well. I think it's about $4 million now. So I think there's still room for negotiation in the rate. It was 85 cents per thousand before we sort of suspended, but we felt like there was additional room because of what Bryan County negotiated with Hyundai. That gives us a little bit of a gap where we get more. But truthfully, 85 cents a gallon is a pretty good wholesale rate comparatively in a lot of municipalities and other jurisdictions that sell a lot of wholesale water to industries. I think the going rate in our region of the states is low as 50 cents per thousand. Pretty rare that it ever gets up to 85 or even a dollar. But we feel like we may have a whiggle room to get to a dollar.
So it looks like by year 2028, we'll be at about $3.5 million?
Yeah. Maybe a little bit more. And like I say, 2028 and 2029, I think, is going to be, I don't wanna describe it as a windfall, but it is sort of compared to the average rate of dollars we'd get through the rest of the revenue sharing agreement. But that's where the so-called windfall is a little bit of deferred gratification. We're being paid back for what we recently sent to Bryan County, I think at the tune of, what was that, $6 million?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half. Yeah. So.
Still not a bad return on the investing in the infrastructure.
Oh, definitely.
And I might add, if we don't do, if we don't put the wells in, then we get $0. The state will put them in, we get $0. So, and the people that are worried about the wells drying up, it's my understanding that they're, well, I've been in meetings, that there will be monies put up by the four counties' development authorities on monies that they have made off the seller of the land. And if a well needs to join a pipe or a well needs anything, it will be taken care of and paid for. It will not cost the citizens anything. So we have a choice, back away from the wells, pay no money, or we go forward with the wells. And, you know, I think, what was it, the first year? It's a million, $2 million supposedly. And, you know, what they're talking about is in a 25-year period of time, then I think they're looking at surface water from Savannah, that Savannah River. So there'll be more negotiations for whoever is here at that time. So that's where we're at with it. And hopefully, we've answered the questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move next to commission and staff comments. And we'll have staff comments first.
Mr. Roy, could I ask?
Yes, sir.
Have some clarification because this, this has come up a few times this week.
Yes, sir.
On the abatements. Mr. Couch, would you explain about the school and fire taxes on the abatements, please?
Okay. The fire taxes, both with the city of Statesboro and Bullock County, are assessed on the new industries, as is the school tax. However, the general taxes that come through the property tax and support the general fund, that's where the abatements or incentives are negotiated for the periods that were, that were put together by the development authority. Is that clear or succinct enough, or?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make the point that they are being paid, that them are not skipped over.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
All right, now, any staff comments?
Good evening again, Commissioners. Robert Seaman, Assistant Public Works Director. Got a couple of things here and wanna cover, and then I'll yield the floor to Director Butler. During Public Works Week, Bullock County Public Works will be hosting a toucher truck program Monday, May 20, 2024, from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Ag Arena. Not only will we have our public works trucks and equipment at this event, but we will have numerous other vehicles there from our public safety partners. We'd like to extend a thank you to the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, EMS, Police, State Patrol, Area Evac, and Animal Service for helping us with this event. We'd also like to say thank you to Dow Kennedy in-house for helping us, Alexis Knox, and several at the Rec Department that are helping us put this event on. Also during Public Works Week, we'll be holding a Public Works Employee Appreciation Luncheon for all of our staff. And thank you for all your support with that matter. One thing I do need to bring before you to make sure you're aware of, on the week of May 20 through the 25th, the Cypress Lake Collection Center will be closed. During this time, we'll be doing extensive renovations to the site for public safety. We'll be closing it down as a hard closure. We'll be directing all the public to use the Langston Chapel and Pine Inns sites. Our plan at this time is to open by the weekend. We've been working with Excelsior Electric on relocating some of the power poles on site. And we're working to update our security cameras on site for better security there. We've had a lot of improper and illegal dumping at this site. And hopefully, in the near future, we'll be able to help correct some of this. We will also put reminders out on social media. And we'll have the large message boards out before, the week before, and during the week of to make the public aware that this site is closed and will not be available to the public. Next item, on May 2, I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Heather Lowery, our Georgia EPD Environmentalist Specialist assigned to Bullock County. This meeting was to inspect and review the closure of the temporary storm debris staging area off Cypress Lake Road that we had permitted and used during Hurricane Idalia. There was no issues found, and the site has been stabilized as per protocol. The next day, we received our letter of closure from the Environmental Protection Division District Manager to close the site until further needed this year if we need to open permit again. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nick Butler, Public Works Director. And to tag on to what Robert had said, I wanna give you an update on our FEMA recovery efforts. As he said, that we've got the debris closure on the temporary staging area. As of this week, we received our first check reimbursement from FEMA Storm Recovery. And that was in the amount, that was for the debris removal. It's odd that it comes in the same week that we get the closure on the permit. But we had asked for, or submitted for, $83,000. Yeah, I don't, I had it wrote down somewhere on here, but just over $83,000. We received reimbursement check for $70,679.96 from FEMA, which I'd like to present to Ms. King. It's so she can deposit that wherever it needs to go. To give you some additional information, you all know we've had problems dealing through this storm. The management from FEMA has been inconsistent, to say the least. But as of this afternoon, I have submitted for final approval for two of the projects, two of the three remaining projects, which are CATSCE, which is recovery for dirt roads during the FEMA storm, during that storm. One of the storms was for road repairs. That total submitted was for $984,161.92. The second part of that recovery was for road grading recovery immediately after the storm. That submitted has been $458,988.81. So we're looking at somewhere around $1.4 million submitted for recovery between FEMA and GMA. The pledges are 85% of that to come back. We were somewhat surprised with how fast this recovery came back on the category A. So hopefully, both of those are considered small projects. They should go through relatively quick. So maybe we can look forward to that money coming back within a few months. So just wanted to update you. Thank y'all.
Yeah, I wanna give you a special thanks because I, I know trying to get fed money is tough. And you've really been persistent and patient because I followed the email communications. But I commend you for being thorough and being right.
Thank you. Any additional staff comments? And here you go, Commissioner comments.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say something to the Transportation Department. I know Director Butler and Assistant Seamans, they get the checks and all that. But the men and women in the back of the room that come up here a while ago, they stand by with their hats and their vests and all on. I'd just like to tell y'all how much I appreciate what y'all do. I stay in contact with a lot of you on a regular basis. And I see people walk up y'all. And I know you don't know whether you fix to be a hero or a zero when they're walking up. And I just appreciate what y'all do. I mean, good weather, you do a good job. At two inches, you get frowned upon. But I just appreciate what y'all do. And I do thank you.
Anyone else?
I echo the same thing Timmy just said, especially to this Public Works group that we got. Because they sure, you live in where we live in our inner county. We run, that's all we do is ride dirt roads and ditches. And I have problems with irrigation pipes and everything else. But, you know, y'all always seem to come in front of the bill when it's gotta be done. You know, y'all always do a good job, and y'all always kind, and y'all can beat everybody around. No matter how, what kind of attitude they bring to you first. But y'all always seem to handle it very well. And I wanna tell you, I appreciate it. Also, I wanna count, tell all the citizens, all the staff, Commission Board, for all the thoughts and prayers for this past week with the family. I do appreciate it more. The citizens of the county is great. That's, if I hadn't text you back, if I hadn't called you back, I'm trying to. It's just a bunch of you. But just the warmth that they showed my family. It makes it, makes me proud to be right. Thank you.
You know, I'd also like to thank the Transportation Department, Public Works Department. Of course, then I look over here out of the corner of my eye, and I see the Fire Department here. I see the Public Safety Director here. I see the Assistant Director here. I see the work camp. I see recreation. You know, we don't know how fortunate that we are here in Bullock County, how the forces that we have to get out here and work. And I've left all some because they weren't recommend, they weren't here. I see the Sheriff's Department recommend, you know, is here. And it's a great county that we live in. We appreciate all of y'all's support. And, you know, it could be, well, just a simple thank y'all, every one of you. Thank you for, again, for the citizens that came. So any other comment from any other commissioner?
Well, I think everything has been said. I always say we got the best staff, the best workers in Georgia. I'd hate for anybody to say anything against y'all. I'm a little old to be fighting, but I might say something to them as they did. But thank y'all for everything y'all do.
And I wanted to thank the commissioners for their hard work. All right, I'm compelled to read this next statement. It's, I must now call for a motion to adjourn into executive session and accord us with the provisions of OCGA 50-14-3B1B and other ethical laws pursuant to the advice of County Attorney General Atkins for the purpose of discussing real estate. So we're gonna give y'all probably three or four minutes if y'all would clear the room so we could go into executive session. Thank y'all for coming. Did a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.